Welcome to the September 8th Muscatine City Council Meeting. Fran, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Ray Walt.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Nat Fig. Sausedo.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Harvey.
Present.
Spread.
Present.
Six absent and... Six absent... Six present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, Fran. We have a short agenda tonight for this in-depth meeting, so we'll move right on into it. Resolution declaring necessity and providing for notice of hearing on proposed urban revitalization plan for Muscatine Grandview Avenue urban revitalization area. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who was the second, Tom?
I just... Greg, are you just gonna quickly run over the reason we're doing this? And it'd be the same on the next one also, I guess. What's it gonna provide for?
Sure. As you may remember, at a recent in-depth session, we talked about tax abatement for two different areas. So I'll cover both areas because they're essentially the same, just two different districts because they are not connected. So we have the Grandview Corridor and Park Avenue Corridor for tax abatement programs. And under state code, the city can adopt one of two tax abatement programs. A three-year, 100% or a 10-year declining scale. Provide incentive for small business or for businesses to grow or expand or build new in those districts and encourage and incentivize that to those key areas. In fact, tonight at the Business After Hours, talked to two different businesses in the Grandview area. One that was interested in expanding and the second one that was excited about the program. Encouraged that it would help bring business to their existing business by having new and growing businesses in that portion of the South End. So they were excited about the program getting underway tonight. But it essentially provides an abatement for new construction or for...
Remodeling.
Remodeling, thank you. Or remodeling or additions to their facilities.
Is there a dollar amount associated with the additions or remodeling? That's gonna be a certain percent... At least 10% of the...
So it's a 10-year declining scale. 80% abated down to 20% or a three-year declining scale at 100%. 15% minimum increase in valuation for the improvement for commercial tax abatement.
Okay.
I'll include another copy of the handout in your update tomorrow as well that we reviewed at the in-depth session. Just as a side, I was talking to Councilmember Sausedo and Nancy put together just a kind of an idea of the impacts. For example, so we took a building on Park Avenue and Nancy costed it out and a three-year... At a five-year... Excuse me. A $500,000 and a $1 million value just plucked them out of the air. At $500,000, that would be a $54,000... Just over $54,000 in incentives over a three-year period and $80,000 over the 10-year program. And at a million, it'd be 100... Just over $109,000 and $160,000 for the 10-year program. So that... I mean, that's the role is to incent or encourage development in key areas where we like to see business or commercial enterprise come to our community. Those have historically been two areas that we've identified for improvements. And with the infrastructure coming in 2019 as well along Grandview Avenue Corridor, the stormwater street rehab, curb and gutter, and greening up the corridor, that along with these economic development incentives should really help enhance the corridor overall and the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any restrictions on the type of business?
No, not for this type of program. This is...
Do we have a time limit that we're looking at this? A sunset date or something? Or are we trying to do this potentially for a 10-year plan?
So the last one we did was just in place until council chose to eliminate the program. And that's essentially how we're planning to proceed at this point in time. We've done... The community has done a couple in the past that were 10-year programs. Last one we did was just simply didn't expire until council decided to end the program. So it gives you maximum flexibility. So if it's built out in five years and you're good to go, you can stop the program. Wouldn't that be a great program?
No, that's great. I'm just... I would feel like it would be better if we had a date because then if we have a great... You know, let's say this works tremendously, which I hope it does. And then we decide to say, "Well..." And I don't know if we can do this. If we could say, "You know what? Six years down the road, I think we should start looking at different target areas."
No, absolutely. You can do that.
And then we can say, "Okay, this is gonna expire." Can we say, "Okay, this is gonna expire in two years from now"?
Absolutely. Counsel... Counsel maximum...
Versus us trying to say, "This is a 10-year plan now or a two-year plan." I was reading through and I understand we have an abatement program for residential as well.
Correct.
And it's my understanding that it's had very good success.
Yes.
So with that, I'm expecting that this will continue to do the same with potential businesses expanding. And thank you for the example because that helps me understand, you know, where a company does a small investment of 100 or 400, 500,000 and how much they can incentivize and have that taxes. I think the 10-year plan is better for them to write off versus a three-year.
Yeah. Gives them the option and whatever works best in their case or their scenario. So absolutely.
Okay. Well, no, I just wanted to make sure. I don't know if that's... If a 10-year plan should be what we should imply or we're good with keeping it with no date.
Well, that... It gives you maximum flexibility. So you can make it a five-year program, a 10-year program, seven-year program if it's working and you wanna... And it doesn't mean you can't look at other districts in the future as well. If there are districts that the council would like to take a look at sooner rather than later, you can just... We can work on another district as well at some point in the future. Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none. Councilman Bynum, how do you vote? Councilman Bynum, how do you vote?
Aye. Aye.
Fitzgerald? Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Aye.
Santos? Santos?
Aye.
Aye.
Harvey? Harvey?
Aye.
Aye.
Ray Walt? Ray Walt?
Aye.
Aye.
Spread? Spread?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Moving on, resolution declaring necessity and providing for notice of hearing on proposed Moving on, resolution declaring necessity and providing for notice of hearing on proposed urban revitalization plan within the Muscatine Park Avenue urban revitalization area. urban revitalization plan within the Muscatine Park Avenue urban revitalization area. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
Don't move. Don't move.
Second. Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none. Councilman Bynum, how do you vote? Councilman Bynum, how do you vote?
Aye. Aye.
Fitzgerald? Fitzgerald?
Aye. Aye.
Santos? Santos?
Aye. Aye.
Harvey? Harvey?
Aye.
Aye.
Ray Walt? Ray Walt?
Aye.
Spread?
Aye.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next, do we have a recommendation for the two council members for the appointment to the newly created nominating committee? I've had suggestions from the community that it be the two at large.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So that was a motion?
Yes.
Tom and Alan.
Is there like no discussion on that? You don't wait for you to say?
One guy's not here.
Yeah, I know.
You want the short?
One would need to be...
You want the short, strong?
One year and one would need to be two years.
You'd wanna identify who's gonna be which?
Right. Who's gonna be the one year and who's gonna be the two year.
Oh, well, Scott. I think it's a good opportunity for me to be able to say that I would volunteer to be the one year.
All right. So Councilman Spread, does your motion include making the two at-large council members the appointments to the newly created nominating committee with Councilman Sausedo being the one year and Councilman Nat Fig being the two?
Yes, that's fine.
Well, I just have... Is Nat Fig up for election in... Seventeen. Would he finish the two years?
He gets... He's up next year in 17.
He won't finish the two years.
He keeps changing his mind.
I gotta flip it.
Well, potential. How do we know that?
It doesn't... I mean, it doesn't matter. You would simply appoint somebody to replace...
We would have to reappoint during that time though.
You would simply appoint somebody to take that position.
Because if he reruns, which I know he's changed his mind multiple times, which I don't even know why I'm saying that here, but...
So you're the one-year guy, he's the two-year guy?
Well, I think so because...
Because he's not here.
I'm not saying that. I did not say that.
Alan, did your second?
That's fine.
Any other discussion?
I would like to thank Scott for volunteering.
All in favor, say aye.
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 opposed? The request is approved with all ayes.
That was it?
That was it.
That's all we had to do.
Moving on to number five on the agenda, zoning ordinance update. Andrew Fangman is going to share with us.
Okay, thank you, Austin. Bring my presentation up. Tonight, we're gonna take the first step towards moving to the next phase of the new zoning ordinance. I'm gonna try and make this relatively brief for everyone. Just some quick background. Our zoning ordinance largely dates back to the early 1970s. That's because it's based on the vision contained within the 1968 comprehensive plan. In September of 2013, council adopted a new comprehensive plan. Rewriting the zoning ordinance is the most important step in implementing the vision contained within the comprehensive plan. And obviously, the comprehensive plan will be the basis for rewriting the zoning ordinance. Just two kind of guiding universal principles to this rewrite is to create the... Draft a new zoning ordinance in a manner that will have sufficient flexibility to be adaptable to unique and difficult site conditions and to preserve the unique character of individual neighborhoods. Another major push I'm making with this is to make it more user-friendly. Doing that in two ways. One is just the way it's organized. And the other way is to illustrate a lot of the regulations in this, which helps tremendously in explaining some of the regulations that are contained within. So as I talked to you about earlier this year, the way we've decided to handle this is to break it into several different waves. We're at a point now where we're ready to begin the process to adopt the first wave. These chapters have been reviewed by P and Z and most of these have come through council. So the chapter... The topics that would be included in the first wave of the provisions to the zoning ordinance include parking regulations, regulations dealing with garage and accessory buildings, fence regulations, cell tower regulations, animals in residential areas, and site triangle regulations. And what I'm gonna do now is because not all of you were here when we went over this because I've been doing this the past two years, I'm just gonna kind of briefly hit the highlights of what some of the more significant proposed changes are. The area in which we're proposing changes where you'd see the biggest impact relate to our off-street parking regulations. One change is just a formatting one. Currently, parking regulations are scattered across 18 chapters of the zoning ordinance and they're gonna be consolidated in one easy-to-use and fine chapter. As is the case with the current regulations, the number of required spaces are based on the type of land used. However, in this case, we've expanded the number of categories, about 30 to 40 different categories where the defines the required number of parking spaces. The one kind of flaw with this method is that you can't create enough categories to get it perfectly. And one thing you don't wanna do is require more parking than is necessary. So based on some of the stuff other communities were doing, we're gonna add a little flexibility to that by creating a process by which somebody can request that the number of required off-street parking spaces be reduced by up to 50% if they can document based on expected vehicle use and land use that they don't need that number of parking spaces. So initially, that request would go to the site plan, review committee would review it and determine if there's sufficient evidence to support that claim. And then if they disagreed with the site plan reviews, committee's findings, that could be appealed to the zoning board of adjustment. One, like as I previously mentioned, one guiding principle is not require more spaces than are necessary. One thing our current standards don't address at all because they predate it is there's no reference to the American disability standards. People still have to comply with it because it's federal law, but one thing we've gone ahead and added them in to our standards, the idea being anyone looking to build a parking lot within Muscatine can pick up this chapter and it contains all the regulations that you need to follow. We've also updated the off-street loading requirements and added the same amount of flexibility. And we've also tried... Also made some tweaks to make the process for sharing parking between adjoining properties a little bit easier. Classic example, being a church and an office where their uses are at different hours, so it makes sense for them to share parking. Another change, we've added clarity for standards of thickness, quality, and other technical features to the required hard surfacing. This isn't too different than what we do now, but right now, it's very difficult to find the places in our ordinance where these standards are set for us or brings clarity. The other thing that's being proposed is a change to the minimum size of a parking space. Right now, we require spaces to be nine feet by 20 feet. That 20-foot is... It's very... Much larger than is considered good practice now. So what we're gonna do is switch to a nine-and-a-half by 18 space. So this reduces the overall size of the parking space, which reduces the size of the parking lot. But it also makes them a little bit wider, which makes the parking spaces easier to use for people with small children or crutches or any other kind of difficulties getting in and out of vehicles. Another very significant change is we're adding the landscape and buffering requirements. And these will be applied to parking lots with more than 20 spaces. They'll be required to contain landscaped islands. And kind of go through where they'd be required. So there'd be a landscaped island of 100 square feet with a tree on it required at the end of each row of parking. And then if there's more than 15 contiguous parking spaces in a row, kind of like you see in that illustration, there'd be a landscaped island required. That was one of the big things that came out of the comprehensive plan, public input that a lot of our parking lots are quite unattractive. Not to pick on them, but the classic example being Walmart where you have about 10 acres of nothing but concrete. And so this will create a more attractive... More attractive streetscape. And it also has some technical benefits because we're... Because it provides places which the stormwater can be dealt with on-site rather than sending it straight into the curb and gutter system. We also have tweaked the stormwater regulations and Brian was a big help in helping me draft these. Stormwater from parking lots will be required to use stormwater quality management practices. And we'll be adopting by reference the Iowa Stormwater Management Manual, which lays out a number of different ways that the stormwater runoff from parking lots can be managed. And the design event that we'll be using, which is kind of the standard, is that they'll be designed to address storms with a rainfall of an inch and a quarter. And one of the things that you'd be allowed to do is use the landscape islands or buffers to do this. And I've noticed in just the past 18 months that just on their own, that a lot of people building parking lots has just become a common standard practice anyway, and this just kind of codifies it.
So let me, just real quick.
Yep.
Is this a plan that's gonna be implemented or people that already have these plans? This is all new for new construction?
This would be when you build a new parking lot, yeah.
This is all new construction? So somebody that's already in the middle, hypothetically, somebody here in town that may be doing a big parking lot and may have already got...
If you've already started, then you... That's how zoning... You've already acquired your grandfather. If, you know, you've already started the process.
Thank you.
The other thing we're gonna add is for parking lots of greater than five spaces, that some amount of bike parking be required. So it's based on a range, I think, from zero... From five to 40 spaces, you gotta require one place to park a bike and then it kind of scales up from there. The justification being is that we, as a community, are investing a lot in bike infrastructure. This is part of... This is part of making, you know, leveraging the value of that so that when people can use it, they actually have a place to park and store their bikes when they get to their Moving on to the next chapter, and feel free to interrupt with any questions you have at any point. The chap... A new chapter, creating a new chapter that deals with garage and accessory building regulations. There's really two major changes that I'd like to highlight in this. One would be kind of a common situation that we deal with when people are looking to construct an accessory building in the rear yard setback. So if you kind of think of garages that are backed up towards alleys, commonly creates a situation where variance is necessary. So this is kind of taking a new approach to it. So for parcels that abut an alley and for which on that block, more than 50% of lots already have an existing garage that's within the rear yard setback, then you'd be allowed to build your garage up within the setback to a point that's the average distance of the neighboring two parcels. It's kind of hard to verbally describe, but that's what the illustration is. So say you're that house there in the middle and essentially you take the average setback of your neighboring parcels and that's where you'd be allowed to build up to without a The other change addresses probably the most common variance that we see, and that's for the request to build a garage that exceeds 1,440 square feet, 1,440 square feet. Currently, there's a restriction... Cumulative restriction on garages attached in detach and accessory buildings and residential chill areas, they can't exceed that 1,440. However, since 2000, the zoning board of adjustment has approved 22 out of 25 of these requests. That's a very clear trend. And the other thing when you look at that's notable is almost all, I think, but maybe one or two happen to be on parcels over 20,000 square feet. So the thinking is, is that clearly maybe it's appropriate to allow larger garages on these kind of larger parcels. So what's proposing is leaving that 1,440 square foot cap on parcels smaller than 20,000 square feet. Then for parcels over 20,000 square feet, you can have up to 7.2% of the lot total, up to 2,500 square feet in garage or accessory building. And I'd note that 7.2% came from the fact that 1,440 is 7.2% of 20,000. So it kind of starts that and then ramps up from there. Kind of moving on to the next chapter, which is fencing regulations, which is also something we're moving to its own standalone chapter. Basically, the whole point of fencing regulations is to balance the aesthetic needs of the community and also to create... With the need to create private outdoor space and then also safety when it comes to visibility of intersections. Currently, you're allowed to have a six-foot-high opaque fence in all areas of your property except for the first 25 feet of your front yard. And on almost all lots, this works well. Where this causes a lot of problems is on corner lots. There's a lot of parcels in town where essentially this makes it impossible to have a six-foot-high opaque fence anywhere in the parcel, which, you know, people have a legitimate need for outdoor privacy. So kind of looked at some other approaches as how you kind of balance this with the need... The needs of not, you know, having a six-foot-high fence right up against it. And so... And you'll see the illustrations in... Kind of try to describe this, kind of what we've created is a third fencing standard for what... For street side yards and street rear yards, which is essentially on a parcel that's on a corner, would be this side that's on a street, but it's not the front of the property. So on these, there's gonna be a band between six foot and 25 feet, 25 feet, where you're allowed to go up to four and a half feet with an opaque fence. And it shows that four and a half feet for two reasons. One being, obviously, it's halfway between the three and the six that would be allowed now. And the other being, we talked about what's required... Going to be required for pool fence, you have to have a four... You'll have to have a four-and-a-half-foot fence around the pool. So if you happen to have a pool on one of these types of lots, you'll have all types of legal fencing available to you as an option. The other significant change is that we're gonna change the pool fencing regulations to match what's within the currently adopted building code. Actually, what we have now is far stricter than is required in the building code in almost any other community. We require a six-foot fence around all pools, which kind of makes kind of the outlier on that. Four and a half foot is pretty much the universal standard, so we're gonna move to that. And then there's some other technical changes, so now it'll match what's in our adopted building code.
On fences around pools, is there specification for the type of fence it has to be?
Yeah, if you... What I provided for you there in that bound document is a staff... A detailed staff report on each chapter than the actual proposed language. There's actually some very technical language that comes straight out of the building code for the size of openings that you can have and all that. Rather than reinventing... Rather than reinventing a wheel, we just went with what's in the building code already. The other one is keeping animals in residential districts. Again, we moved it to a standalone chapter. We pretty much left... We left the regulations unchanged for parcels smaller than two acres and larger than 20 acres. Right now, there's a real gap in regulations where it's really unclear to what's allowed in terms of keeping farm... Essentially, farm animals on parcels of that size, particularly when they're over 30 pounds. So what we've done is kind of divided animals up into four different categories. The first being domestic companion animals, which would be dogs, cats, other things traditionally kept as pets. And for all-size parcels, there's no limits on these, so long as all other requirements in city code are met. For small farm-type animals, which are all animals under 30 pounds, you could have four per acre. For medium farm-type animals, you could have two per acre, which is between 3 and 500 pounds, and then large, one per acre. Not, like as I previously mentioned, not changing anything under... For parcels under two acres, they would only be permitted domestic companion animals. And that's based on actions consensus that the council gave earlier this year. For parcels over 20... Residential parcels over 20 acres, as is the case now, will be treated as agricultural parcels and the agricultural standards would apply to those parcels. The other thing we've added is regulations regarding beekeeping. This has become a much more popular hobby lately. Currently, we don't have any type of reference to beekeeping in the zoning ordinance, so it's unclear to power if that's regulated currently. So what we did was adopt best practices in regards to this, borrowed from other communities. Towards the end here, cell tower regulations. This is long and technical, but essentially four things. The biggest one being complying with recent federal and state mandates. Both federal and state government have continued to chip away at local government's ability to regulate cell towers and communication equipment. So we brought our regulations back into compliance with state and federal rules. We've also created a simple, more consistent height limit for cell towers across all zoning districts and by which... Methods by which we try to encourage co-locations, multiple carriers on a single tower. Some of this is kind of academic. We haven't... It's probably been close to a decade since we've seen a new tower erected in town. Most of it's been equipment being adjusted on existing towers, but these rules would be in place if someone did come with the proposal. And finally, we did add screening and landscaping standards for the base stations, which right now, in some... They can look quite industrial where you'd have kind of an industrial-looking shed with bar... With a chain-link fence with barbed wire on the top of it. So rather than having that be the visual impact, we require that to be screened with vegetation.
Will you be addressing kind of parallel with the cell phone towers, like AMI? Will you be addressing, kind of parallel with the cell phone towers, like amateur radio people?
Yeah, it's all, cell towers, I, it's wireless communication equipment, you know, that's, cell towers is just easier to handle. It addresses all.
You know, that has come up now and again.
Yeah, I do recall variants is on that, and it does specifically address that.
What's the height limits that we have on there? I don't read it.
150 feet, which is pretty standard. The thing you want to balance when you're looking at, at height limits for a cell tower, is there's the aesthetics of a very tall tower, which you might not like, but the taller the tower is, the more different carriers you can place on the tower, and the less towers you have overall, so we've tried to strike a balance between the two, to kind of encourage fewer towers in town.
But the ordinance says the limit on it.
What's that?
This, this says the, the height limit on it.
150.
Okay, I don't see it, but that's fine.
Any other questions on cell towers before I move on to what I?
Nope.
If they want to exceed that limit, they can come to.
Yeah, there's a process by which, but.
That's what I thought.
But, but essentially, it lets them have that, because that's, essentially that, if you're gonna build a cell tower, that's, you're not asking for something unusual, but that's the height you need, so that, that's what, that's what's.
That's what I thought.
And finally, kind of a small chapter on site triangle regulations. Site triangle regulations are by which the height of things, as you come up on an intersection, are regulated, so the first 30 feet, if you draw a triangle on intersection, you can't have anything higher than three feet. We've illustrated this broken into its own chapter, and the only real change we're making is changing it, right now, you can't have anything higher than three feet, which is unnecessarily restrictive. Typically, the standard you see is you can't have anything between three and seven feet, because that's the band by, through which a driver would look, so this way, you could, you know, if you have your tree, tree up to seven feet, the canopy could still overhang the site triangles, so it's just making clear that that's.
All right.
So that, that concludes the, the chapters that we're including in the first wave, so the next step is, is I'm processing all this into one large amendment, it'll be, it'll, it's gonna go to P and Z, and then should come back to you in sometime in October. What I provided for you is the detailed staff reports on each chap and the actual language. If you have any comments on that, please get back to me, other than that, I'll be, we'll be back to bring this, make this happen. Any questions or comments?
You're going to anticipate requests for wind turbines within the city limits?
Actually, I do have a, I do have a draft of a chapter to regulate that I'm working on, it's not quite ready. I would anticipate that when we bring the second wave of stuff, that'll be in there. The big one will be, and that'll be the sign regulations, which I had hoped would be in this, but Supreme Court threw some curveballs, we're still working through how to deal with all that.
I know they tend to be somewhat controversial with the neighbors, you know, as far as wind turbines and stuff.
Right, and so, number other communities have dealt with this, and there's getting, there's some modeling, so I'll have something to share with you, once this is done, that might, that'll probably be one of the next ones that you'll see an in-depth presentation on.
Okay.
So I seem to recall, within the last couple of years, we dealt with a, a variance request for a private radio operator. He wanted a taller tower.
Yes, we did.
Mentioned that state and federal code is chipping away at our ability to regulate, so at some point, are we gonna basically be forced to say no, or just not consider it because of state and federal regulation?
No, we'll be forced to say yes, more than likely.
Forced to say yes, for a taller tower?
Yes.
Really?
That's, that's, that's been the direction that regulations have been moving for the past 20 years. Things continue, we might not have any regulatory authority over it, right now, frankly, we have very little.
I assume in all cases, they have to abide by FFA airspace.
Right, that's all, that's all in there, but it's very difficult for us to say no with cell towers under state and federal regulations.
So, when you, when you say that we're gonna pass this, and this is gonna be something that will be grandfathered in for somebody that already has it, we're not gonna be making this change for them. I want to run maybe one or two scenarios, so I understand this.
Sure, absolutely.
If, if somebody has a big parking lot that has 50 spaces, and they've had it for 10 years, concrete's starting to fall apart, they decide to hammer it all out, put it all new, would you consider that to be part of something that would be grandfathered in? Or would this be a case in then saying, hey, that's already been existing, you're just repairing it? How do we, how do we identify that?
Typically, how we've handled that is, if you're putting it back the way it was, you're fine. If it, where you would contribute compliance is if you had an existing parking lot, and you're, hey, I want to add another 20 spaces, but that's kind of how.
That's kind of the way we would be able to do that. All right, so then, back to your last presentation on your triangle. Somebody has a, a bunch of seven-foot shrubs that's in an area where you can't see, we're making this requirement to be a three-foot.
It is three-foot now, right? The change right now is, you can't have anything taller than three-foot. We're making, technically, we're making it a little bit where you can't have anything taller than three feet, unless it's, oh.
I'm listening, I'm listening to you.
I actually have that illustration.
I just, I just want, what I'm trying to get at is.
Let me go to my illustration here.
Okay.
I had that as an example, that, that's one of the reasons why we're adding. So it's called the vertical clear zone, so right now, you can't have anything taller than three feet, but what we're, what we're proposing is, you just can't have anything between three and seven.
So how do you get that tree to grow?
Around that.
So you wouldn't plant it in the, it would be, so if you planted it outside of that, and it grew over it, that's, and there's also exemptions for things like signposts and a few other things that are narrow and skinny.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear that, that something to that effect, hypothetically, that somebody has a, a four-foot.
Right now, you can't add that.
We would be addressing it.
I mean, if you read, right now, it says nothing over three feet, so even if you had a tree that was far away and it grew down, you'd have to cut it back if it got about, if it got into the vertical clear zone, even if the branches were 20 feet up, if you wanted to have a literal reading of our current ordinance.
And it's supposed to be clearing the sidewalk by 10 feet or something, isn't it?
Right, and that, that's not addressed, but that's in the nuisance chapter, not, not, there's no proposed change there.
Okay, thank you, Andrew.
Any other questions? Thank you, Andrew. We'll move on to the last thing on our agenda, comments from the council, do you have anything? Councilman Bynum?
Craig, this week, a couple people asked a question, how is the doggy dog park coming along? And then also, how the cemetery stairs are coming along as well?
Well, I'm not involved in the cemetery stairs project, that's a private project. They've been sending some, some bi-weekly updates out to council members. I see that they, they received a grant recently and are continuing to work forward. Go ahead.
We're, I, incredible update, Rich Clans and I are, are meeting with them tomorrow. What we're looking for is per, per the, the agreement that Friends of the Cemetery Group struck with council, that there's a number of items that they, they need to turn in to us before they're allowed to proceed. There's still a few final details that we're looking for to get them an approved site plan, so hopefully, that'll be, some of that will be clarified in our meeting with them tomorrow.
The dog park's also been working with city staff to, to get their seating done at the dog, dog park location. I know they have a couple activities that are coming up here recently, fundraising activities as well, but they've also been coordinating with Public Works and Park and Rec staff to get the seating done, and, and in for fall seating, so everything's moving ahead with the dog park as well.
I thank you, Craig.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Fitzgerald?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Councilman Saseo?
Nothing at this time.
Councilman Harvey?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Ray Walt?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Spread?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Staff?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. I just had a couple things. First of all, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Laura Legis for her service of almost 10 years to the city of Muscatine, and as tomorrow is her last day as our solid waste manager, I would like to wish her all the best in her future endeavors. Thank you, Laura. Secondly, I would like to invite everyone to coffee with the mayor at Ellie's on September 24th. And lastly, I would like to remind everyone that I'm collecting puzzle books for veterans. If you would like to leave them at the mayor's office downstairs, anytime this month, we're gonna see to it that they get delivered to the Veterans Administration. Thank you, everyone. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a good evening.